Give a shout out, hello to those of you that are watching us online right now on Rebel TV. Everybody, thank you for joining us for our May Board of Education meeting. And the first order is called Order, the second is invocation. And at this time, I'll ask Reverend Scott Mathis to come to the front, please, and lead us in the invocation. Mr. Mathis? Reverend Mathis?
Thank you all for coming so much for being great today. Thank you for all the blessings that you have each one with that. Just pray that you believe in this meeting tonight, God. Thank you for the school system and this community that we're all a part of. Just be with each and every one that's involved. God, just keep them believing, so they can make the best decisions, God, and help them to lean on you and for that guidance and that wisdom. I'm gonna lift up those that are shit, God, and struggle right now. I'm just praying that you believe in them, give them peace and counsel from God and all that you can give them. And just thank you once again for all that you do for education today. Love it. Pray this has used the same. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, sir. We'll ask Assistant Superintendent Robert Ensley to please lead us in the pledge for item number three.
Attention, salute. I am related to the United States of America, due to the current public, which is saying on an action under drop and deliver deliver to the United States of America.
Thank you, sir. Our next item on the agenda, number four, is to approve the consent agenda. This consists of two parts. Part A is to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting itself, and second is to approve the minutes. Those minutes are from April 9th, 2020, and they are included, so Mr. Ensley will go ahead and open that up for us and scroll through those.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve the minutes of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Everybody unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Next item is a review of monthly information updates, and out of interest of time, we've consolidated for this month items that would normally appear as individual board meeting agenda items, and these three are school governance team updates, school happenings, and the facilities update. So the first, the school governance team update. Ms. Rigdon, if you'll please come up to the front and give us a quick review of the information that's included here.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board. We do have a little bit of information here about school governance team meetings. We have not really had any face-to-face meetings. The principals have been communicating though with their school governance team members if they've had things that they needed feedback on, such as their school improvement goals for next year and items such as that. But we'd already met our six required times during the school year, and so they have not had business to connect, and so they've not had face-to-face meetings in the last little bit. There was an email approval for a fundraiser at Fannin Middle that was just sent through the email. Other things that are going on in school governance right now that are kind of exciting is we're in the midst of our spring elections. Every school has an elected parent that will be selected this spring. All of the parents are qualified to run by taking part in a orientation training that was available online. Also, people in past years have also been qualified to run as a parent. Those elections are being scheduled right now. Also, three of our schools have a faculty member who will be elected this spring. West Fannin, let's see, West Fannin, East Fannin, and Fannin County High School. The high school only had one staff member who asked to be on the ballot, and so that election has already happened since they were on the outpost.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on the school governance team update for Ms. Rigdon? Okay, the next item, Ms. Rigdon, is school happenings, and on behalf of Mr. Schoffey, principals were excused from this evening's meeting, so would you speak to this item?
Absolutely. Tonight, it was the turn of our high school principal to do the school happenings for the month. As you know, every single school board meeting through the school year, we do have a presenting principal, and the main one was Mr. Schoffey. He typically likes to do the main one because he gets to share with you the cool stuff that's going on at the high school, especially related to graduation. I know that you already had the opportunity to view this in advance. It's about 18 minutes, and it's extremely informative, and so the folks at home might want to click the link and enjoy it as well.
Certainly, those of you in the audience who haven't seen this or those folks that are watching us on Rebel TV, I encourage you to take time to watch this video from Eric Schoffey about school happening second semester at Fannin County High School. All right. Any questions for Ms. Rigdon on that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rigdon. Mr. Danner, can you speak to C, facilities update?
Good evening, Board. Again, just like Ms. Rigdon said, I know hopefully y'all got to preview this. This is just not a TV on the wall. The only thing about this is we've consolidated all of our old analog cameras into digital cameras. Every, of course, admin has this capability, as long as the office staff, the office staff can view cameras now. That is the entrance at Blue Ridge Elementary, so if office staff sees something there that doesn't look right, they can lock down the system using our salt.
So that means that they're using the cameras that are funded with SPOSS, and they're able to remotely lock down the building with the electronic locking system that was funded with SPOSS to keep kids safe.
That is correct. That is correct. We're just going through very quickly. Door at Blue Ridge was new there at Blue Ridge at the entrance. Notice it's got the Salto lock on it, and we'll go quick on these, Robert. That was a wish list from his doctorate. There's also buzziens there at Blue Ridge. We've got three buzziens now, so every door at Blue Ridge is now locked. This is very exciting at East Fannin. This is one of Mr. Price's wish lists. Y'all been to the outdoor classroom, so again, here's a couple pictures that were taken last week, just for Board, for the board meeting to get everything in there. Was actually out there today, and it absolutely is amazing. So if you get a chance to run by East Fannin and look at about the 80% project completed out there. So again, that's Mr. Price spoke him today, and he's just ecstatic. West Fannin, again, just a shelf that was moved from one room to the other. Just a two-person job, our maintenance guy involved on it. That's where it was actually located. This room is actually going to become a counselor's office. Now just moving things around there at West. Utility sink there, it's been on the wish list for several years. So again, since all this time, had some access, some time to do the utility sink there. Don't look at the school bus, y'all, the wall, actually, that was a, the old radiator heaters that's been removed. There were several radiators that are not being used at West. They request to get rid of them. So again, maintenance was out there removing, I think, six of the radiator heaters. Another wish list item for West, gym getting painted. Again, so that's a new gymnasium there at West that's got a fresh coat of paint. Middle school, bathroom there, that goes into a conference room. The staff uses those restrooms. So if they're having meetings just to the right of that picture, it interrupts the meeting, so Mr. Knuckles asked about getting a door in there. Of course, we've got that installed. Salto's on it as well. This is the security film at the, this is a picture at the middle school. He's at, he's at, he's at Blue Ridge. He was there yesterday. I think he actually got completed today. So don't excuse that's left to get the second phase of the security film will be the high school, and he'll start on it next week. So we've done a lot more security film. Again, another door there at the middle school kitchen. We was gonna put Salto on it per Mr. Knuckles' request. When we went to saw Salto, the door pretty much was about to fall in, so we're gonna have to get a whole new door replaced there, again, with Salto on it. ADA ramp back to middle school, coming out of connection hall, going down to football field or the playground, it used to just be a step. So again, per, again, another wish list from Mr. Knuckles is to make an ADA compliant. Wish list item, it used to be just a mud pit there. Kids used to go down through that mud. Of course, that's without the grass on there, so that's a concrete poured sidewalk, so the kids can actually get to the buses there without getting wet all over them and coming out of it. High school behind the CTA building at the greenhouse, again, this road was actually caving in. So again, got that repaired because of this, had a major drainage problem, so again, that's been repaid, restrapped. Maintenance parent pick up a whole lot easier, also for the buses. Again, another wish list at the high school, circulation desk and media center has been removed. Again, this was last week, so again, we're waiting on some orders to come in and get the car replaced.
They're gonna remove that orange, aren't they?
I'm sorry?
They're gonna remove that orange, aren't they?
The orange has been removed. I begged and begged and begged, but it's actually been painted, and again, another small painting job there with actual metal, if you really can't see, this was a finished product. The metal up above there was rusting, so again, got it semblasted on up, on up, up right there, right there, there you go. So all those beams were rusting, so again, got a good facelift. All the doors have been painted for the new gymnasium there at the high school. New floors at the high school A-hall bathrooms, men's and women's, it used to be ceramic tile. Concrete was cracking, the tile was cracking and popping up, so again, that tile is very hard to match, so it looked like a Jigsaw puzzle in there, so again, we got the floors redone there at the A-hall bathrooms there at the high school.
Been very busy for the past few weeks.
Yeah, these are items that would normally happen during summertime, but since we knew kids were not coming back into the building, we started working on some of those summer wish lists. So again, this was a lot, of course, not all of them, but the things we knew we could get done pretty quickly. Again, most of those were wish lists from the principals. So again, we got a good head start on the summertime.
And recently, you've been spending a great deal of time preparing for graduation?
Graduation, graduation will be next Friday. High school called me last week and said, you know, how can we try to have graduation? So we went up and measured the stadium, the bleacher section, social distancing, six feet apart, so per their request, we went up and done so. Dr. Range and I got together last week, and along with Mr. Schoffey, and we can pretty much see 360 people on the home side practicing social distancing, semi-file on the visitor side, and along with governmental meetings, local government, following all the guidelines. You know, we got the blessing from our local government to have a graduation. It's gonna be very simulated. All the fine-tuned details have not been ironed out yet, but again, talked to Mr. Graham, Robert Graham, today, I just talked to Sheriff Hurdy today. So again, the exact details will be coming up very soon, but again, it's gonna be a very limited graduation. Again, I know that Mr. Callaway, well, he had spent an hour or two on the, on the high school field the last couple of days there, so y'all don't have to speak to that later.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Danner?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. The work that's being done at East Fannin, is that that field where the timber's been cut?
Yes, sir. The T-ball field, not the old baseball high school football field, not that big field. It's the one off to the right
Right.
of the gymnasium where the outdoor classroom was, that lower field. It was a snake pit, and that's what Mr. Price, that's how he described it. He said, "It's a snake pit. I don't want kids going down there." So per his request, got the fence removed, got the banks moved out. I can't wait for next month to show you the pictures of the finished product.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Danner, thank you. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Danner, item number six?
No, so there's none been signed in, and I spoke to our visitors, and they said they were just expecting.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll move on to number seven, which is also yours, Mr. Danner. Approve HVAC project, FCHS Old Gym.
Yes, yes, sir. Last month, you know, asked the board approval to pursue the air conditioning, the old gym. So we had a, put it on the procurement registry. We had three, three companies that provided bids for us. That bid opening was Tuesday. There's the Tally Sheet, Cord, Max Air, and Monday's, and Monday's is the low bid, the total price on it. Notice that it's got a base bid and also gas piping replacement. Sorry about that. And so again, I included all that, but the gas pipes are old, they are rusted, and that was highly recommended from all three ones that come in. And so the total price on that for the old gym AC at the high school is $162,031. And that will start immediately if approved tonight. If it is approved, it will be paid for out of supplies.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Danner. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation to approve the Old Gym HVAC project as presented.
Can the Board have a motion for the Old Gyms HVAC project?
So moved.
Me.
Okay. I'll second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Okay, thank you. The next item is number eight, to approve construction manager at risk. Mr. Danner?
Yes, sir. Again, you know, this has been an old-world project in trying to name a CM. You know, CM at risk is a little bit different than general contractor, but again, with the architect's recommendation, he recommended we do a CM at risk. So again, we sent out an RFQ in March and then an RFP in April. From those two stages of events, the committee that was designed through a rubric are recommending Bowen and Watson as our CM at risk for the transportation facility and development, South Development Center throughout at Toccoa, Georgia. We have worked, the school system has worked with them in the past.
This is a follow-up to the approval on February 13th for the approval of a, to pursue the construction manager. And so you got that approval in February, and then RFQ in March, RFP in April, and then here we are to make the recommendation. Mr. Chair, I'll make this recommendation as presented.
Chair, have a motion for a construction manager at risk.
So moved.
You have a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to ask one question. You did get references on those people, didn't you?
Absolutely, absolutely. We had actually six companies total that went through, on the first round, we went through the first round, and actually the second round, that's when we started checking references, and Bowen and Watson did have positive references from multiple sources.
I'm good.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Item number nine, approved purchase of welding booths is yours again, Mr. Danner.
Welding booths, but actually very excited about this one, and I think y'all are too. Again, we sent this out not for bids but for quotes, because quotes are part of our DJED policy. It did not meet a $100,000 threshold, so we got three quotes from a Clean Air America out of Rome, Georgia, Lincoln Electric out of Cleveland, Ohio, and Kemper America out of Alpharetta, Georgia. And I'd like to recommend Clean Air America from Rome, $42,660. Again, turnkey project, it's, they come in, they install everything, have it set up. We will actually hook up the electrical to it, but again, these are booths that are made offsite, they brought on here, you know, put in a place, so again, it'll be paid for out of supplies.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. I'll make the recommendation to approve these welding booths as presented, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve the welding booths? I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to second it. Is there any discussion?
The picture that's on mine, is that those products?
That's it. It does not have to be that lime green yellow. You can choose the color, but again, that is the one, yeah, that picture on it, Robert, the top one, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one there. The top section where it says Clean Air, the EVO and all that type of stuff, that's the filter system. That's the fan, and that one fan will filter both booths. So again, that is a dual section. You really don't see how big that thing is, but again, it's, you know, it's five feet, five feet wide, 41 inches deep there, 124 inches tall with where the filter is, and then the other booth to the right of it without the filter, notice that's 83 inches tall. So again, you know, that's going on.
Do you see where the gray shelves are in there?
Yes, sir.
Is that where you work on your project?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I ain't never had nothing like that, so.
Excuse me, where will these be located? Sorry, Mr. Danner.
This is for three stations. Each station will accommodate two students, is that correct? Yes, sir. Then this system, you can actually order it in singles. This is a dual system, which means two students can work on it, but that one filter system will filter both booths. So that one that you see there will fit two, so again, we're gonna order three of these that's wanting to do six students.
And where will you have these stationed?
Where is it gonna be located? It's actually gonna be here in our CTA building in the ag room. We used to have welding up here before I was in Fannin County, but it's in that corner. It's gonna be in that same location, gotta get some electrical done, but we actually have the air compressor already here on the site, and we already actually have some welders on the site. They're not the most modern welders. Now they make them roughly this size, the ones we got are the big one, but they're still operational, so again, we'll have to buy some supplies and some protective here, but again, I think to get the program started, we've got to have the booths.
All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Thank you. Item number 10, to approve, to request assistance from the Georgia Department of Education with local facilities plan. Mr. Danner?
Yes, sir. Doug Suits from the DOE called me actually a couple weeks ago. Doug Suits is the facilities person with the DOE. He says, "Do you know that your five-year plan is expiring in June of 2021?" And I said, "Yes, sir." He said, "Well, we gotta get moving on it." So again, even though our current five-year plan is in place till 2021, it takes a year to work on the next five-year plans. But he says, this is coming direct from Doug Suits, we gotta have board approval to request permission for the DOE to come help us do the five-year plan. And again, the five-year plan is where we can use our COPS program, the capital outlet program, use state money on certain projects and that sort of thing. So again, I highly recommend this. Again, we, you know, we want to do some things there at the middle school along with some other things at the place that we can actually get state money from. So again, this is just an approval to ask permission for the DOE, Facilities Department to help, come here and help with this plan.
And this plan will facilitate the flow of funds into Fannin County schools for the pursuit of projects based on the plan. So this is important for funding for us. So with that, Mr. Chair, I recommend to approve the request for assistance as presented in the document from Mr. Danner.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
All right. Mr. Danner, thank you. You had several items there, and you got them covered, so thank you, sir. Item number 11 is update on the FY21 CTA federal and state grants, and with that, we'll ask Mr. Roof to come to the front. Mr. Roof, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Board. As y'all know, and I'll make sure that we know, that I gave you a very exciting, what was this one, 10-minute-long video to watch, that gave the, all the details of this, but for the sake of this meeting and keeping it efficient, we're gonna just update. These are the different CTE state and federal grants that we, that we applied for this year. These do not need board approval, however, we thought it was very, very important for y'all to see these grants as well. And so the CTE grants that we're applying for are the CTAE apprenticeship grant, the CTE Ag Extended Day Grant, the CTE Ag Extended Year Grant, the Ag Young Farmer Grant, the CTE Extended Day Grant, the Industry Certification Grant, and that is where our engineering lab that is up for industry certification is coming here, the CTE Supervision Grant, the CTE Perkins Five Plus Reserve Grant, and the Perkins Five Professional Learning Grant. And again, just for the, you know, for the public to know, if anyone wants to go and watch the really enlightening, informative, fun-to-watch 10-minute video, it's right there, YouTube.
Yeah, there's 30 minutes of videos between this and the next agenda item.
That's right, but that provides a ton of the details as to what those grants are all about.
All right, so that takes us in, then there's no action needed on item 11?
No, actually, that is simply just for board update and just to be transparent and make sure y'all know all the grants we're applying for.
Okay, item 12 then is where we need the approval, and this is Perkins Five Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment and Local Application. Mr. Roof?
Absolutely. There's one final grant that we're applying for, and I should also note that all of the grants that we're applying for from the previous list along with this one, these are all grants that we've applied for in the past. None of these are anything shocking or different or necessarily in need, but these are all grants we've applied for in the past. So this one, though, this is the Program Improvement Grant, and this one does need, this one has a part of it that needs a board approval. It's the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment and a local application. So what that means is basically we have to assess, similar to a school improvement plan or similar to a district improvement plan, we have to assess our needs, and we have to come up with a, with a, with a local application that then has all of the goals of how we're going, and action steps of how we're going to address those needs. And I will say that this plan has been edited and updated and shared, and input has been taken from Mr. Schoffey and the high school administration, Dr. Watney, and the assistant superintendents, and the CTE department have all had input on this. And so by looking, one of our needs, by looking at different types of data and by what we accomplished throughout the year, is noticing that we do need to address some local industry demands. And this, this is something that we put in here, you know, some of the, some of the root causes for that need are the fact that that is a constant need. That is a need that takes place yearly, monthly. I mean, being able to really tap into your local industry and local business and keeping up with those needs, that's something that is constant. And another root cause, as y'all know, even, you know, if we see those needs, those needs are not always, it's not always possible to meet those needs, you know, because of having to have additions to personnel, classroom space, welding equipment, you know, things like that. Sometimes it's difficult to meet those needs. So those were the root causes, and we'll look at the goal here in a second that attaches to that need. The other need that we saw in this, you know, I have to give credit to the CTE department and for Miss Dubois and everything in the past, because it was very difficult for us to dig in and find actual needs based on hard data, hard statistics. But one need that we did see is that our, our non-traditional female enrollment in classes like engineering, information technology, classes like that, STEM-related classes, is very low, is 1.65%. So we really felt like we needed to address that, that need in terms of trying to boost the female interest when it comes to students and in those classes, in engineering and information technology. So we have, you know, root causes, we talked about how, you know, those, those female models may not always take, you know, been in elementary schools in terms of engineering teachers. We do feel like that's gonna change naturally, because if you look at what's happened over the past several years, this class coming in to the high school is gonna be the first class that had a STEM lab teacher in an elementary school. And then that's just gonna continue to improve, we think, naturally. But we need to make sure that we know that that's a goal of ours is to improve that. Another root, another root cause, again, just kind of making sure that that connection is there between STEM and STEAM and CTE, and I think that we're all on board with trying to make that connection as well. So those were the needs. We had two goals, and I won't go into, again, all the different action steps or anything, but the two goals that we had, you just scroll down a little bit, Mr. Enslay. First goal, first smart goal was that Fannin County High School will, or the school system will provide the high school with at least two new CTE pads. connection as well. So those were the needs. Uh, we had two goals. Um, and I will go into, again, all the different action steps or anything, but the two goals that we had, you just scroll down a little bit, Mr. Enslie. First goal, first smart goal was that Fannin County High School, um, will, um, or the, or the school system will provide the high school with at least two new CTE pathways over the next two years that aligns our local industry business needs. So basically, we're, we're accomplishing that by bringing in the welding and by bringing in the entrepreneurship program because those were both, um, programs that we felt, uh, aligned to those industry needs. Uh, so that was the first goal. Uh, so moving down to the second goal, Mr. Enslie. The second goal there, uh, is to increase the non-traditional program concentration percentage, uh, from a total of 10.78% in 2020 to 13.78% in 2022. So I know that seems like a, that 3% might seem small, but that truly is a smart goal. That's something that we feel like we can accomplish that would, that would help us out there. And by non-traditional, again, that means classes that, uh, different genders don't necessarily sign up for. Our male non, non-traditional is actually extremely high. It's the female non-traditional that we need to work on in order to, to, to boost that percentage. So that was our, uh, plan and, uh, that concludes it. And it's, it's the plan that is submitted for your approval.
Well done, Mr. Roof. Um, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve the Perkins Five Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment and Application as presented by Mr. Roof.
Can the Chair have that motion?
Moved to accept. Second, second. With question?
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
You suggested that women don't necessarily go for the engineering. What does engineering cover that, that we don't typically think of as engineering? I think of it as someone that builds bridges, et cetera.
And that can be part of it, you know, more of the structural engineering. But, you know, you could also, uh, in that class, you might be covering more on the, the bio, uh, biomedical engineering. I mean, there's engineering that's biology-based, uh, that, that could be something that's more interesting to a certain pocket of kids. Uh, so, you know, the, i- it's not just the structural engineering, uh, as you're saying. I mean, that's just an example that I can think of off the top of my head, you know, that it could be something that other kids are interested in. And, and again, um, it's just one of those, uh, pieces of data that we found that we need to improve upon is to, uh, boost that, uh, interest in our female students when it comes to those STEM-related classes.
Do, do men want to be cooks? Take cook school?
Uh, it seems to be the case because our male non-traditional enrollment is very high. So that means, uh, boys signing up for food nutrition, uh, boys signing up for , uh, different, um, uh, healthcare pathways, you know, such as patient care and things like that. Uh, our percentage is, is very high. So, uh, anyway, it's more on the other side that we need to try to improve.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Well done, Mr. Roof. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, anybody from the public, 20-minute video with more details if you want to see it. It's great.
All right. Thank you. Uh, approved district financial report is item 13. We'll ask Susan Winn to come to the front, please. Ms. Winn? Oh, she's on the way up here. I'm gonna take a moment to brag on her. Uh, I received an email from the Georgia Department of Audits that recognized Ms. Winn as a recipient of their Award of Distinction for Excellent Financial Reporting. And that's, uh, something I'm very proud of. Uh, if, if we weren't in the middle of a pandemic and a lockdown, uh, the Georgia Department of Audits actually intends to come up and one of their representatives, one of their officials come and present this award to our school district and to Ms. Winn on, on behalf of the school district. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with that said, take us to the financial report.
March 31st, at 75% of our fiscal year being complete, our local revenue sources are at 98.112% versus 90% from the prior year. Our total revenues are at 87.74% versus 83% from the prior year. Our total expenditures are 70.41% versus 72% from the prior year.
This is clearly a, a healthy financial report and I'll come back to that in just a moment. But, uh, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve it as presented.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve district financial report?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is number 14. It's an update on our SPOS. We're still in SPOS Core and this is the SPOS Core collection for the month of March. So, uh, as you can see, uh, it's, it's the highest March actually for us, but it's coded yellow because it didn't meet the expectation, uh, anticipated growth of 1%. It's actually, what is it, Robert? Scroll back over to the right. It's about a third of a percent. I'm sorry, it's to the left, the other direction.
It's 0.33%.
Yeah, about a third, uh, was the growth. So we actually showed some growth in the month of March, but, uh, you know, my thought is, you know, second weekend and the pandemic began to take hold. Uh, and so, uh, it'll be interesting to see what's collected in the month of April and turned into us in the month of May and reported next month.
I am very anxiously waiting to see what that is.
Yeah. It's a big good indicator of the economy. Uh, no actions needed on this board, but again, thankful for these funds. It allows us to do so many things, so many of the items that were approved earlier, uh, in just this meeting alone. So, does anybody have any thoughts or comments on this loss? Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Winn, school quarterly financial reports. State law requires these to be approved on a quarterly basis, and these are the funds for each school. Turn it over to you.
We start off with Blue Ridge Elementary School, and these are from July the 1st through March the 31st of the year. So it shows their beginning balances, receipts, disbursements, transfers. Um, they're all signed off by a principal's bookkeeper and myself. You can, and then East Fanning, which is going to continue on each, each one is uniform because of our new software and that's going very well at all the schools. Then we have West Fanning Elementary School. Um, it's very concise and easy to, to look at and read. And then after, you can keep going after West Fanning. Uh, then we have the middle school. And then it'll either be the high, high school, and then the final one will be the CTE.
Level of accountability that you've implemented in this, starting with the bookkeeper and then to the school administrator and then to you as the district oversight on this, uh, this is part of the reason, uh, in that financial reporting that the State Department of Audits was impressed with this.
They sign him every month. They send him here every month. I review it every month and then report it every quarter.
Done a good job with this, Ms. Winn. Uh, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve these budgets collectively as presented for the schools and CTA.
Can the Chair have a motion for the quarter financial reports?
So moved. Second, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is 16 is to approve an FY20 budget amendment. Ms. Winn, you want to talk to us about that, please?
Yes, we have the FY20 budget amendment. We should, we'll have to share both with them. So the first one, um, is our special revenues for FY2020. So this is all the federal programs. Title one gives you carryover your other federal programs, federal preschools. So these are all the carryovers that we've received from the federal programs. So I've adjusted our original budget, added the carryovers to our budget as of right now. And then in September, we'll have our final year-end adjustments from anything that we've received from the federal programs and amendments to be presented.
Okay. And the second item, Mr. Enslie?
That will be our general fund. And so this is the same. We have received our midterm allotment sheet from the state of Georgia, which is all our QBE. So you can see state QBE reduced, we had a reduction of $255,000 on that line item, um, $41,000 reduction. So all the reductions from the state of Georgia that I've received, I've put those in as, as those adjustments. And then that gives us our, our adjusted balance from the beginning of the year to now for our revenues and expenditures.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Winn. Uh, Mr. Chair, I recommend that you approve the budget amendment for FY20 as presented, both documents collectively.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is to approve a budget timeline for FY21. And, uh, that's, uh, Ms. Winn, turn it over to you.
Yes, tonight I'm asking for the approval of our budget timeline. And then on June the 11th at our regular board meeting, I'll be requesting a spending resolution for July 2020. And then also we'll advertise July the 1st in the newspaper for July the 9th, first public meeting for input on the budget. And that will be at 5:30 PM. And then we'll follow with our regular board meeting July the 9th, which I'll ask for a spending resolution for August. And it will then, we'll advertise for our second public meeting on the 29th. We'll have our second public meeting August the 13th at 5:30. And then also on August the 13th, we will need to decide, um, on two. Well, that, that is to decide on the tentative budget, which we will advertise then. So we'll have to decide on the date that it's going to be a call meeting between the 20th and 21st. And we'll advertise that in the paper stating what day we'll, or not the budget.
It's kind of difficult going into this right now because by this point, the legislature is normally finished. And they're going to come back into session, uh, in, in June. It's June 11th, I believe.
June 11th.
Yeah, they're going to come back. And, and so, you know, we get a great deal of insight into how we can budget from the, the legislature. And so we're waiting on that information. One thing that we do know though, from the governor's office, is there's going to be an across-the-board 14%. Now, how that translates is yet to be seen. Uh, but, uh, that's a 14% cut for all state agencies, including schools. And, um, so that's, um, that's significant. And that, which is, even though we know the amount, 14%, we don't know necessarily how it'd be applied. Uh, but that amount is significant for the Fannin County School District. Um, and what I will say though, is, is I review this information and review the financial report that we just approved earlier. I'm thankful for three things. First, for being conservative during the past few years to have built a solid fund balance, a reserve that will allow us to weather this financial storm better than many. The second thing that I'm thankful for about the Fannin County Schools is that we are a debt-free school district. And that is significant. And it's, that's significant in good times, but especially in like what could happen now. The fact that we're debt-free is great. And finally, a conservative Board of Education and district leadership who consistently are, are, they're careful and they're prudent with district funds. And, um, these factors will allow us to weather this, this potential financial storm better than many school districts. And I'm thankful for that. So, uh, Ms. Winn, we need approval on this budget timeline?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve the budget timeline as presented.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve the FY21 budget timeline?
Motion to approve the budget timeline.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. And along with that is the 2020 millage timeline, which is, is the next millage. Ms. Winn, turn that over to you.
Yes, sir. On, on August 13th, we're meeting that night. I will present to you a change in millage rate along with our five-year tax history and levy that we will advertise in the newspaper on August the 19th. And then at that meeting, we will need to set the same call board meeting time so that we could actually set the millage rate and set the budget sometime between August 20th and 25th.
Okay. And that will involve coordination, of course, with local government. Uh, and, Ms. Doss. Lynn Doss will help us with that, represents both us and the county. And so will assist us in, in getting this approved properly. So, uh, this does require board approval. So, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation that we approve the 2020 millage timeline as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
You have a second with question? That 14?
Who was the, who was the motion?
We'll, we'll get to that in a sec. We need a motion in a second, then we'll discuss if we can. But, okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved. You have a second?
Now, is there any discussion?
That 14%, it's already been decided.
Yes, sir. The, the, going back to the previous item, I've been talking about the building of the budget for next year.
Can it be changed or will it potentially remain?
I guess if the state chooses to change it.
So that's their budget. That cut is in their budget already determined.
The guidance we've been given is to expect a 14% decrease.
What part of our budget does it affect?
I'm sorry?
What part of our budget does it affect? Not personnel?
All aspects of operation will be affected by that.
Excuse me?
It would affect our overall operating budget, yes.
I still don't understand.
Ms. Winn, can you help me?
It will decrease our revenues and our total operating budget, but we have a very sound.
Reserve.
Reserve. So it's not expected to, it, to affect any personnel. We will have less revenue than what we had last year by 14% of our state income.
But it does not include teachers.
The state of Georgia is going to give us 14% less of QBE revenue money, which is our allotment sheet, which is on our financial statements. So they're going to decrease how much they're funding us. We're still going to pay our teachers the same thing that we only pay our teachers, but they're not going to give us as much money. We're going to have to come up with that money ourselves.
That's what I was saying a moment ago about the fact that we have a solid fund balance, a solid reserve.
Right.
That 14% is going to be a storm, but that reserve is going to help us weather that storm.
I guess I'm asking, do we have the, the money for the same amount, same number of teachers, for the nurses, for?
They will cut nurses by 14% of what they give us for nurses. On the approved budget, I have the adjustments. There's a line item that says nursing. There's one item that says categorical grants. They will cut each one of those line items by 14% of revenue. If you look back at the adjusted general fund revenue that is on, that we have approved, I have them listed line-by-line item. So you could actually go back and take that and decrease it by 14%. And that would give you an estimate only because we don't know what the assembly is going to finally end up with when they come back and pass the budget. But that's what the guidance we've been given is to cut 14%.
Okay. So you're saying, Michael, that you can cover that 14% because we have a strong reserve?
I believe that this is, uh, I believe that there'll be an economic recovery. Uh, I think it'll take time, but, uh, our reserve will allow us to, to get to that point. Yes. It's my intention to protect, uh, all the people involved with the Fannin County School System. That would include the, of course, the students with that reserve and our personnel with that reserve, and then also the community taxpayers with that reserve. Yes. So the, you know, being conservative in the past is going to help us now.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the millage timeline?
Okay. So we'll come back then. So we, yeah, go ahead.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Yeah, that's number 18, Candy. All right. Thank you. Ms. Winn, good job. Our next item is to look at meal prices for SY2021. And the floor is yours.
Good evening. Robert, I think the request is, the first one is well, well open. And I, there are three documents attached in this, but two of them are from USDA related to student meal price calculations. And guidance does recommend that student meal prices should increase by 10 cents for paying students. Uh, this increase is not required because the school nutrition had a positive account balance on December 31st, 2019. And families that apply or qualify for free and reduced price meals will not see an increase. So this increase would only be for our students that are, are paying the full price for their meals. And for this reason, I do recommend that we follow the recommendation derived from our calculator that USDA provides.
And I think you have the actual prices on page two.
The prices are on page two, Robert. If you scroll down.
Scroll down, Mr. Enslie.
A little bit more.
There you go.
Uh, so it will have our elementary school meal price at $2.35, our middle and high school meal price at $2.60. And we would still have a free breakfast program for all of our students that choose to take advantage of that.
That's still an incredible bargain, right there. Okay. Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve the meal prices as presented. Okay, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve the meal prices as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
I make that motion. Second.
Any discussion?
There ain't no place in Blue Ridge if you can buy lunch for that amount.
Get what you get, no. All those in favor? Unanimous.
I did want to share with you, we have had some questions related to our current ability to serve all of our meals free to children. And we have this ability at this time because the U.S. Department of Agriculture is allowing school nutrition programs to operate under the seamless summer option due to the unforeseen school closure. Normally, when school is in session, we operate under the National School Lunch and Breakfast Programs.
So because of the emergency right now, is how we can offer the lunches for free. I've actually got those totals here, I'll share them in a second.
Okay.
It's impressive. So we have the approval on that?
We do.
Okay. And Candy, do you have everything you need for the record? Okay, you good? All right. Next item then, Mr. Chair, is Personnel, item number 20, and I defer to you for executive session or not.
Mr. Ruiz?
Hi, dog.
Bobby? You good?
Bobby, you're good.
We're good, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, go ahead and open your personnel sheet dated May 14th, 2020. And I'll take these collectively by date, under resignations. I have two resignations that are effective May 28th, 2020, and that is Ashley Coppins and Joseph O'Neil. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
Move to accept their resignation. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Have two resignations effective June 1st, 2020, that is Martha Chastain and Debbie Dillinger. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
You have that motion?
I'll second it.
Second.
I second it. All those in favor? Unanimous.
All right, thank you. The next resignation is effective June 2nd, 2020, and that is Dionne Riff. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
Move to accept.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Okay, we have recommendations, and all of these are pending completion of paperwork and background check. I will make the recommendation for a centralized registrar effective May 18th, 2020, and that is Sandra Silva. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Chair, second that motion?
I make that motion. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Thank you. The next are for teachers, all for the 2021 school year. And I'll just go through these. Terry B. Flowers, Candace King, Frances Lauer, Julia Lindsay, Hannah Nicholson, Jessica Ramirez, Wesley Simonton, and Brittany Todd. Make that recommendation for all those personnel, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
You got that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. The next recommendation is for the 2021 school year, and it is, yes, ma'am?
Sorry.
Okay.
We'll slow down.
All right. The next recommendation is for 49% teacher for the 2021 school year, that is Jillke. Make that recommendation.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Unanimous again.
All right, the next recommendation is for administrator for the 2021 school year, Deborah N. Decabelas. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous again.
All right, thank you. The next recommendation is for an administrator on an as-needed basis and not to exceed 49%. So administrator up to 49%, as needed, Mary Betsy Hyde. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
You got it.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Unanimous again.
All right, and the last is Teresa Brown in the School Nutrition Department. She will be 65% at effective SY 2021. That will be at 127 days. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous again.
Okay, thank you, Candy, you good? All right. So that takes us then to item 21, which is superintendent's comments. And first, I'd like to say up there in the, is he up in the booth still, or where is he? Mr. Moats, there he is, up there. Thank you for being so accommodating to use this facility, Mr. Moats, to promote social distancing and give us space to spread out. We appreciate your support. Also, SRO K, are you here? I'd like to say thank you for being here. Also Reverend Mathis for the invocation, Mr. Inslee for the pledge, thank you. Speaking of Mr. Inslee, approximately 89% of our budget is personnel. And Mr. Inslee is our personnel leader. And he does an outstanding job of leadership of this. I commend him for his work to ensure that we are appropriately staffed, all the while maximizing our available funding. He is one of the most conservative people that I know, and I want to say thank you, Robert. Mrs. Rigdon, Mr. Danner? Where's Mr. Danner? There he is. Shouldn't be able to see him without orange tie that he's wearing. Your presentations tonight, thank you. Mrs. Rigdon, you're doing a great job as our chief academic officer for this school district. You're always looking ahead, and you excel at finding opportunities to keep us moving safely forward, even the middle of a pandemic. And I'm proud of you for that, thank you. Mr. Danner, I commend you, sir, for what you've done, the work as evidenced by multiple board actions tonight. You're moving us ahead, and I'm so proud of you with facilities and planning. You covered a lot of ground tonight and areas that are improving our facilities and that are saving our district money again. Thank you. Mr. Ruth, incredible job. Not only did you have to learn Perkins 4 and finish out the current school year, but you've done so well and given us a strong start with Perkins 5. Congratulations on the welding program, I'm excited about that, board. And with tonight's approval, our Perkins 5 plan will become the example. And Ms. Miller, where are you? There you are. Since our last meeting and with the help of technology, you've led virtual registrations for kindergarten and for pre-K, including today's pre-K drawing, which was great. You've done a great job with these and everything else that you've worked on with Student Services since March 13th. You're always looking out for our students, and thank you for that. Mrs. Finlin, and I'll give you a shout out too, Scott, since you're here and everybody in technology, y'all are awesome. We're way ahead of the curve because of you, and we absolutely could not do it, could not do this without you. And I'm excited about the district registrar position. This is going to make us better able to serve parents and save money at the same time. And I'll tell y'all, and I have a little bit of insight with this, but what folks see in the public with the work of technology is just the iceberg. With tech, the majority of their work actually happens behind the scenes. For that, I say thank you, you and your department, for that. Mrs. Sisson, I want to thank you and Nutrition Department for preparing meals. And at this point, we have prepared approximately, I think it's just over 56,000 meals. Thank you. I also want to congratulate on receiving the state equipment grant. What was it, 47 districts in Georgia? I think receiving, we were one of those 47. It's a grant that Mrs. pursued, congratulations on that. And Mr. Foster, where are you? There you are, sir. I thank you and the Transportation Department for delivering all those meals. You've done a great job coordinating, working out logistics, and you always emphasize by asking, how can the Transportation Department help? You guys are willing to do whatever it takes, and I'll say thank you to Transportation. Ms. Wynn, congratulations on your award. I look forward to a time when the official from the Department of Audits can come to us and can present that award. That's exciting for Fannin County. Thank you for your work on budget planning. You are truly a financial expert, and I appreciate how you're thinking through so many various scenarios to plan in a time when the only thing that you know for sure is that there's an economic downturn. You're doing a great job with that. This board, the students, faculty, and staff in Fannin County community are benefiting from your wisdom and governance. And I want to thank you for your support that has allowed this district to achieve that healthy fund balance that's going to take us through this, whatever that means. And you're making a difference, thank you. I want to take just a moment to remember Gornet Webb. His web service to this Board of Education, to our County Commission, to our bedrooms groups. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Shofi for the video that he prepared tonight. But I also want to give a special shout out to Fannin County High School. For the last three days, Fannin County High School Assistant Principal Dr. Ramsey called out a graduate's name in our stadium, and that graduate walked from him on the field to a receiving line with Mr. Shofi, Mr. Galloway, me, and also Heather Collis. And each student had a video and had professional pictures made while their family and friends cheered them on from the track. It was awesome. I also thank David Henson and the SROs who kept everything moving, as well as the high school staff members who worked behind the scenes in the field house, getting the kids ready for that and making sure that they had met all the qualifications. The result was a lot of smiles, and on the faces of students, even bigger smiles on the faces of the families that were right there with them. It was incredible. My smile was among those with my own daughter. I want to say thank you to Bubba Gibbs and his crew. They kept the whole thing streaming live on Rebel TV for those folks, for all three days, it streamed live on Rebel TV for those folks who couldn't make it. It was incredible. And finally, I want to thank all of our elementary, middle, and high school teachers for their work with the class of 2020. I appreciate the investments that these teachers and these faculties and staffs at the schools have made, and these students, and I know that those investments are going to yield huge returns as this class moves forward. I'm looking forward to seeing the many great wonderful things that they will accomplish. My prayers are with them, and may God bless them and keep them always. With that, I'll turn back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Have you invited Mr. Volanteer to start? You will start, Mr. Trump.
Well, is anybody else here excited about the school system that we're in here in Fannin County? It's very exciting. You know, I look, I was thinking about it, and I look up and see Mr. Moats up there, and I think I probably gave him a few of his gray hairs. You know, but I look at the uncommon times that we're in, calls for uncommon strength, and I see it rising up. And a lot of folks, even those that are viewing online, really don't understand the work that I see the administrators and these people doing to accomplish graduation, making it a memorable one. It might not look like the ones of the past, but I definitely assure you, it'll be one they'll never forget. It's going to be a good time, and I see the efforts that have been placed to make sure that it is the best graduation that we can provide in the times that we're living in right now. So I want to thank all of you that have worked very hard for that. If nobody's told you thank you, I'm saying thank you because I see that effort. You know, it's, we look as an assessment that he was talking about with CTAE, he was looking for, Mr. Ruth was looking for needs and wants. I was just talking about that earlier, that we don't really have many needs here in Fannin County. It's good that we have a reserve that we can make it through a 14% cut and still move on and really not affect us right now. And so the things that we are really striving for are really our wants, is what we want to see. We got our needs, but there are things that we want to do and do better, and I'm thankful for that because I want, I want to be able to provide more and more for these kids. I'm pushed toward the CTAE side, and I'm excited about that. But I'm thankful that we are in a community that is so blessed. Can I say it again? We are blessed and thankful for every teacher that is dedicated. And I see it because my 10-year-old's involved and the teacher's checking in on her, making sure she's getting what she needs and getting her stuff done. So I'm thankful for that, and although I can't say it to all of them, I'm saying it now, I thank you very much. I'm just thankful to work with these guys that have a heart for that and a leader, a superintendent, that is constantly keeping us aware of what's going on. And to see the endeavors that are behind the scenes take place. I just, I just want you to, if I could say anything, just be thankful that this place is blessed. We got the favor here. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the next. I don't know where I can face after that in a way. Good job, Mr. Coop. I just want to say, we've got a great board, and I enjoyed tremendously working with these guys. I want to recognize Mr. Inslee, Ms. Rigdon, Mr. Danner, Ms. Quinn, Mr. Ruth, and Ms. Shannon Miller, and everybody else that Dr. Guatney has on his team. These people, along with the teachers, along with the bus drivers, along with the custodians, have made this great for Fannin County, I think. You know, there's people in other parts of the state of Georgia, and I'm sure all over the United States, who aren't blessed to have the things that we have. It's just unbelievable that we can take these meals out to these children. And you and I both know that they're not going to have something to eat unless they get that. A lot of them never get breakfast, a lot of them never get lunch. And I'm so thankful that we can do that for our children here in Fannin County. The meals, 56,000? 56,000. Tremendous job. And everybody that's had a part in that, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Mr. Foster, thank you for, and tell you bus drivers, thank them for doing the safety and running all those routes and doing everything that they need to do. And teachers, I know, I've heard it, they don't be in the classroom, it's worth a rap, doing it out to the children at home. But that's our teachers. That shows you what caliber of teachers that we have. And I'm grateful that we have the opportunity, not tomorrow, but next Friday, to have graduation. You know, if I was one of those seniors and this was my time, I'd be very thankful that we could have that. Now, when I graduated in 1968, bang, bang, and it was all over, you know? I mean, it wasn't hardly nothing, but that's 1968. This is 2020. And I'm thankful for everybody that had a part, had a part in this school system. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ruiz?
I'm going to use the term educator very broadly to include everyone in our system. I can't imagine how poor y'all's mind and heart has been through this. Ever since Mr. Guatney came on board, I've been kidding him about, he's been tried in every way possible. But when y'all started delivering the meals, Mr. Guatney called me one day, he was relating the first day it started, and told me about a little boy that was on the side of the road with a hat of umbrella and tattered clothes, and they offered him a meal, and he said, "I have a brother inside." I'm not ashamed to say, I cried with Mr. Guatney. Fannin County is special, and the teachers are a special breed of people. I thank the good Lord in heaven that y'all care like you do. I wish I had the words to really compliment you properly. You change lives, you give, you take lives that are ordinary and make them excellent. It's amazing to me, the difference. It's amazing to me, the difference that y'all make. I wish I had better words to express myself, but y'all should be very, very proud of yourself. If you changed one life, isn't that a miracle? But to think that you do it on a daily basis, and you report each morning, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, whoever you are, if you carefully care for students and give them a life to live later after school, safety, and just on and on. I pray the Lord bless y'all and rewards you for the work that you do because y'all truly are special. And this, County has always said, this is the best school system. He says in the state, I think, but I think it places farther than that. So, I'll just stop before I start. I'm through.
I want to say thank you to everyone in this system. You have gone above and beyond to accommodate our students through this difficult times, the difficult circumstances that we find ourselves in. It's remarkable. I'm thankful for so many things. I'm thankful that this Board and this administration has been conservative and fiscally responsible and that we are in a position where we can weather the storm. And I've made that statement a number of times, and the time is upon us. Those systems that are carrying a heavy load of debt right now are truly struggling, and they're gonna struggle more with the cuts that are coming. So, we are blessed indeed. I'm thankful for this loss that has allowed us to fund our technology. I watched as other systems struggled, trying to come up with some way to provide personal devices for their students. And here we are, already in position to deal with that. I'm thankful for the COLD initiative, gave us a head start on distance learning and the planning and the thought that had gone into that program truly served us well and put us ahead of the game. I don't want to take too much of your time, but it's an honor to represent and to be an advocate for the young people of Fannin County. It's also an honor to have the opportunity to be a good steward of the taxpayer dollars, and I'm thankful. I want to congratulate the students who have earned academic achievement awards. I want to congratulate the students that are receiving scholarship money. A very special congratulations to the graduates, the class of 2020. You are unique. You have dealt with the difficult situations that you, that we find ourselves in with grace and with perseverance, and I'm so very proud of you. The circumstances that we find ourselves in, no way diminish your achievements, and we're so very proud of you. May God bless each and every one of you.
I have to say, I agree with everything, couldn't add a word more to any of it. I do want to thank all of our faculty and staff for your extremely huge hearts and willingness to reach out for our children and our community, the way you step up in ways that's unimaginable. I wish that everybody in our community can sit on this side of the table and see the effort that y'all put into it and all the heart that goes into it, just for our students. It's amazing. I believe everybody would look at it a lot different, so I wouldn't want to add anything or take anything away from what all these other wonderful guys here have said, but all evening was this, I am very honored, it was such a privilege to be there, to watch our graduates walk across and to see their smiles, to see their eyes, especially in this kind of uncertainty. To see those children and their eyes light up, you automatically lose all concern for the uncertainty, and you see that we're gonna make it through this, that there is hope. They, they're not worried about it, they were excited, the hope, the aspiration they had, just the dreams, everything, you could see it in their eyes, and it enlightened me, I mean, they did it. It empowered me, it was very moving. I counted it as an honor. It was grueling, I mean, a few times the weather was a little uncooperative at times, but truly was an honor and a privilege to be a part of that. Wouldn't take anything for that. My whole time being on the Board, that's probably one of the things that stands out more to me than anything right now. If I was to look back and had to pinpoint one thing that, you know, I'd tell you, that would be it, just to see their hope and their aspirations, they walked across. It lived to me, so it was truly an honor. So, with that, I'm through, and I do appreciate each and every one of you. For that, I seek a motion for us to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous again. Thank you.
Thank you.